In the pledge of allegiance, ladies and gentlemen, I invite you to please stand if you wish, and Pastor Jenkins.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you that this is a day that you have made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. Your word says that we should pray for those who lead us, that we may lead quiet and peaceable lives. Heavenly Father, I ask that you would give this council divine wisdom, knowledge, insight, and understanding to make decisions that are best for our city on this evening. We thank you, Lord God, that all things will be done in decency and in order, and we give you all the glory, honor, and praise for you alone are worthy, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, please register your attendance. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
All members are present and none are absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now have a special recognition. Councilman Streetman, you are recognized in the well.
Is this on? Nope. How about now? The light's green. Now the lights are... No, it's working. It's working. I guarantee I can talk about her. All right, like to recognize two young men tonight. One of them can't be here, but he is watching on FaceTime, and I can see him from here. But first of all, can we bring up Mr. Ethan Hester as well as Ms. Angela Bosma? It's a really special recognition for both of these young men. On June 10th, 2025, shortly after 6:00 PM, Blake Bora and Ethan Hester, two American Red Cross certified lifeguards for the Clarksville Country Club, were involved in a near drowning incident involving a three-year-old female near the shallow end of the pool. Both lifeguards swiftly removed the little girl from the water as she was found unresponsive, no breathing, and no pulse, and rapidly performed CPR as they're trained to do. 911 was called by Bay Standards, and prior to their arrival, Ethan and Blake had successfully restored the victim's pulse and breathing and were continuing to render appropriate care as CFR and EMS personnel arrived on the scene. The little girl was transported, alert, oriented, and breathing on her own via Montgomery County EMS to Tenova, where she was monitored. The little girl made a full recovery within 48 hours, even being given the stamp of approval from physicians to go on vacation with her family within that week, where she enjoyed tons of swimming and summer fun. Both Ethan Hester and Blake Bora have both been employed with the Clarksville Country Club seasonally as Certified American Red Cross lifeguards since the summer of 2023. We are just so proud of both of you young men to be able to save this little girl. Thank you for everything you did. And the reason I also asked Ms. Angela to come up here and join us, not only is she one of our firefighters with Clarksville Fire and Rescue, she is the one that in her spare time helps out and trains these young men and the women that are lifeguards there at Clarksville Country Club to be able to save the lives of others. So thankful to both of you, as well as to Blake Bora, who is joining us on FaceTime right now. So want to give y'all just a little certificate here. Ethan, this one is for you. This is from the Office of the Mayor as a lifesaver certificate, and that's from both myself and Mayor Pitts. And then, if you wouldn't mind, would you please give Blake his as well?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you wanted to say?
Just wanted to thank her.
Yeah, incredibly proud of you, bud. You did a phenomenal job.
First of all, I just want to thank you, my manager Angela. We would not have been able to save her if it weren't for her training. I want to thank Blake as well, if he's still on FaceTime. He is. Thank you, Blake. You were a great help during the situation. And finally, I also want to thank God, because he gave both me and Blake the strength, the courage, to be able to do that and not freeze up in that situation. Thank you, guys.
She did ask for recognition, but it should be noted that Ethan's mother is Erin Hester. Or maybe she did ask for recognition. Montgomery County Assessor of Property. To you and Bryce, thank you for raising such a fine young man. All right, we're now ready for our next item on our agenda, Planning Commission Report. That would be, Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. If you give me just a moment to pull it up, for some reason it's not loading on my iPad, but luckily there's other ways to get to it. All right, first up, we have the Planning Commission Public Hearing and Adoption of Zoning. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinances and resolutions before us?
Ordinance 108, 2024-2025, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning case and map of the City of Clarksville, application of faith investments for a zone change on a partial fronting on the western frontage of Alpine Drive, approximately 420 feet south of the West Dunbar Cave Road and Alpine Drive intersection from O1 Office District to M1 Light Industrial District. Ordinance 109, 2024-25, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of Christian Innovative Enterprises LLC for a zone change on this partial of land fronting on the northern frontage of Kennedy Road at the terminus of Stone Bluff Way and Kennedy Road into R2A Single Family District, Single Family Residential District. Ordinance 110, 2024-25, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of ransom S. Ritter Jr. for a zone change on a partial of land fronting on the northwest intersection of Needmore Road and Thrush Drive from R1 Single Family Residential District to R5 Residential District. Ordinance 111, 2024-25, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of Running M Properties LLC for a zone change on property located south of West Concord Drive, east of Fort Campbell Boulevard, and assessed approximately 260 feet south of the Fort Campbell Boulevard and Concord Drive intersection from C2 General Commercial District to R2A Single Family Residential District. Ordinance 112, 2024-25, first reading, an ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance of the City of Clarksville, Tennessee, as it pertains to overlay districts to include Fort Campbell Boulevard and Tiny Town Road corridors. Resolution 69, 2024-25, a resolution adopting a final plan of services progress report for annexed property north of Hancock Road and east of International Boulevard. Resolution 70, 2024-25, a resolution adopting a plan of services progress report for annexed territory north of Gatorsburg, Garrett'sburg Road and Clyde Court. Resolution 71, 2024-25, a resolution adopting a final plan of services progress report for annexed territory east of International Boulevard.
Councilman Streetman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, I move we go into public hearing.
Motion been made and properly seconded to revert to public hearing. Without objection, we're in public hearing. First item on our public hearing list is Ordinance 108, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of faith investments. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of Ordinance 108? If you would give us your name, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Larry Riconi, 308 South Second Street. I'm here on behalf of faith investors. This is to rezone a lot. It's located on Alpine Drive, and this is in an M1 Light Industrial Park. Most people are familiar with this area. The roads in there are going to be Husky, Alpine, West Dunbar Cave, and then Industrial Drive. If you're familiar with it, there are lots that face inside the park, and this is one of the lots that clearly face inside the park. Behind this lot is Old Trenton Road, and there are lots that face Old Trenton Road. We're asking to be rezoned to bring this lot into conformity with the existing M1 uses inside the park, which is a light industrial park. Most, as in review of this, there are two levels of lots, one fronting Old Trenton and one inside the park that were zoned O or O1. And the uses are really not in conformity with O1. This kind of came to light as the city and the county have been doing a better job with business licenses and with new companies starting out, which is great for everyone now, because we're finding this out ahead of time. But this one clearly is inside the park. When you looked at this, and oddly enough, I used to own the lot to the south of this on Old Trenton Road. I bought it as a vacant lot and built a building there. And that was some of the last lots to be developed, and I think no one really knew that was O. But the importance of that is that O provides a buffer to across Old Trenton Road, R1. And our position today is that because we are a lot that faces inside the park and we face Alpine, that there still provides ample buffer to the R1 across Old Trenton Road. I don't really know why the O was there, because if you look on your maps, I have the map here. I know y'all have better than I do. To the north of this is all R1 and the M1 abuts every bit of it. So I don't know what the planning was at that time, but clearly everyone in the park is treating it as an M1 park, and we're asking to come into conformity with that. We are consistent with the land use plan. We're consistent with the comprehensive plan. You know, this has been brought up before, and when we took it to RPC, RPC staff had a recommendation for approval. The RPC Commission had a recommendation for approval. No one spoke against it. There's been, there was no comments that anyone was against it. I've tried to reach out to a party directly behind this three times today. I've had no return call, just to get a feel for them. But today, we believe this to be proper. We believe that we're actually only bringing this lot into conformity with its intended use. And again, because it is inside the light industrial park, we ask that we be rezoned to M1 Light Industrial.
Thank you, Mr. Riconi. Any comment or question from counsel for Mr. Riconi? Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor of Ordinance 108? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against Ordinance 108? Next item is Item B, Ordinance 109, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of Christian Innovative Enterprises. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of Ordinance 109? Mr. Christian? If you would give us your name, and you have five minutes. Good to see you again.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor Joe Pitts, council members. It's a pleasure. My name is Will Christian or Will D. Christian III. I'm here in favor, obviously, of the rezoning of this. I did have the opportunity to hear the meeting this past week and the concerns or questions that we had, and I had the opportunity to speak with Councilwoman Lovato, so hopefully I was able to answer your questions accordingly. Councilman Chikinab, I did reserve two acres, a little bit under two acres. We have a barn that's over 100 years old. It is historical. It was one of the oldest barns, I believe, in the City of Clarksville to have tobacco in it for minority farmers. So it is something near and dear, and we'll also additionally use that land for crops, specifically just organic crops for the people that will live in the community that will be next to it. So the point is to really kind of give back. The point for the overall development is really to help uplift and bring the community together. So hopefully, that answers your question in regards to the acres that we're setting to the side. But outside of that, if there's, I'm here for any other questions that the council members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Councilman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I really appreciate the due care that you're taking with this, and especially reaching out to that neighbor that is directly next to this. And I spoke with them. They're in favor of it, and I will be a yes vote as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any more comment or question for Mr. Christian?
Mayor, I have one, but my life won't work.
All right.
No, my fault.
You're recognized.
Thank you. Did the thing about the graves?
Yes.
Has that been resolved, or have you, anybody looked to see what that was about?
Great question. That has been resolved. I spoke with the landowner. It's actually a close family friend of ours. She lives down the street on the end. I don't know how familiar everyone is with Kennedy Road, but her house is right next to the Spring Creek Parkway. Her son, she has a son. It's Ms. Hillman, Jenny B. Hillman, to be exact. She has an older adult son who heard through old family history that there may have been a grave that was on the location. That has yet to be determined. There were many studies done even before the Spring Creek Parkway came, and in those studies that were done, none of those things came to fruition. So he, in talking to him, said that he wanted to personally reach out to Ms. Lovato and kind of say he didn't have any concerns with our actual development. It was just something that he was told. But it was nothing in terms of finding anything on our property that showed any type of burial sites. Again, I talked to my father. My father was born and raised here. His grand, or his father was born and raised here. None of those concerns. He said he never knew of any burial sites. Ms. Hillman is over 80 years old. She herself said there was no burial sites that she knew of. It was just kind of hearsay, and her son was just kind of bringing that to light with the other questions that he brought to Councilwoman Lovato.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more comment or question for Mr. Christian? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor of Ordinance 109? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against Ordinance 109? Next item is Item C, Ordinance 110, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of ransom S. Ritter Jr. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of Ordinance 110? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against Ordinance 110? If you would give us your name, and you have five minutes.
My name is Toni Morgan. Good evening, council. I live on Needmore Road. Been here a few times because there have been many zoning requests in our area. It's always for a large number of houses. Anybody's been down Needmore Road lately, you know the amount of traffic on the road. In our particular area, I live on the corner of Needmore and Pea Ridge, there's an incredible amount of flooding right through our property. They put high water sign now all the time in the heavy rains on Pea Ridge due to the amount of water that comes from this proposed area, as well as all of the surrounding areas. It's been addressed many times, the flooding in that area. There's never been a good solution. The traffic is a huge issue, and the fact that they're asking for an R5 zoning allows a huge amount of development on a small amount of property in an area that's already overcrowded, too much traffic, and a flooding issue. I know the Planning Commission recommended disapproval. I hope you all will listen to that and take that into account when you vote on this.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Morgan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak against Ordinance 110? Yes, sir, if you give us your name. Raise that microphone up just a little bit, and you have five minutes.
I'm Kevin Haley. I went down to Regional Planning Commission and spoke to against this. I spoke to many of the council members about it. We had brought this up in 2022, and it was voted down through the Regional Planning Commission and City Council also. That building, townhouses up on that area, did not go along with our little small neighborhood. It was built in 19, in the 70s, for less. It's a two-lane road. It's right over the side of it. It's a two-lane road in front of it, which is Needmore Road. Traffic backs up from Trenton Road back to that location. They're asking for approval on it, and I'm just asking for disapproval if y'all, please, y'all listen to us.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Any comment or question for Mr. Haley? Thank you very much, Mr. Haley. We offer time for rebuttal. If you're in favor of Ordinance 110 and wish to offer rebuttal, we have room for one person. All right, we're now ready for Item D, Ordinance 111, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of Running M Properties. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of Ordinance 111? Mr. Powers, you know the drill.
Good evening. Bryce Powers, 46 Union Street. I'm here representing Crest Properties, which is a part, I'm a partner in this partnership that has under contract to buy this property from Running M Properties. As you know, this property is currently zoned C2, which allows for multifamily and commercial, some pretty intensive uses right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. We are proposing R2A. I know that's a little bit smaller lot than is the surrounding neighborhood, but it's at least the same single-family use and will substantially reduce the density that this property will be producing. Right now, we estimate under the C2, roughly 120 to 125 townhomes could be built there. We're proposing 38 to 39 new lots. And we understand there's some drainage concerns. We heard it through the executive session. And so although we were asking for your approval on this, we're also saying, could we have a 30-day deferral to meet with Mr. Smith and talk about what might need to happen? And we want to just kind of know, get the cards on the table about the drainage. We understand we have some responsibility, and but we just want some time to clarify that, if you would not mind. I'm also here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Any comment or question for Mr. Powers? Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Where is your access going to be to this lot?
So we also have a lot on Concord under contract that's going to allow access out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more comment or question? Councilman Chikinab, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Powers, water retention, are you going to, do you plan to have all the water retained on-site?
We obviously will have to do detention on-site. That's why we want to meet with the street department. Mr. Smith in the executive session kind of mentioned maybe some additional measures that would be beyond typical. So we just kind of want to know what those are so we can make sure we can account for that in our development plan. But obviously, we will be retaining our stormwater. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is in my ward, and I have talked with several of the residents, plus Mr. Powers. I'll be more than happy for the 30-day extension, so I don't have to say it again. For the residents, this is a lesser of two evils. You're, like you said, it's right now C2, 140-something apartments could be going there. This severely reduces the amount of footage that these houses will take up. And I applaud Mr. Powers for asking for 30 days so that he can get a lot of stuff straightened out before it comes back to us for a vote.
Any more comment or question for Mr. Powers? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor of Ordinance 111? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against Ordinance 111? If you would give us your name, and you have five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn DeMerton. I would just like to speak about my opposition to this proposal, whether it be residential homes or apartment complexes. My family has lived at 14 West Beller Boulevard for decades, and I just have several major concerns about this. The first one mainly being the flooding issue. As you can see on a map, we are actually downhill off of 41A, and there is a big ditch that runs directly on my family's yard, and that connects to the home across the street from us on West Beller Boulevard, and that also connects to East Beller Boulevard. And this runs all the way through that property, all the way down to Concord, past Concord, all the way down to Ashbury Road. And I believe if they attempt to build any sort of drain system, if that does fail, it will cause major flooding. A lot of that being in my family's yard. We already deal with some pretty high waters getting into that ditch when there is severe rainfall, and that could also affect other neighbors on West Beller Boulevard and on Concord. Another issue is it's just very inhumane to me. There's a lot of wildlife that stays back there. It is a small woods, and I just think, again, it is very inhumane if they tear down this whole entire area, and all those animals will either, it'll cause the death of a lot of them, or they'll be relocated and forced out towards 41A. Again, I just think it's a very, I do not think it's a very good idea. It has been fine for many decades behind our homes, and it just is very uncomfortable knowing that they would like to tear all of this land down right in our backyards and try to build homes right there, and so many at that. So I just wanted to express my concerns about it.
Thank you, Mr. Marchant. Is that your last name?
Yes.
I got close. Okay. Any comment or question for Mr. Marchant? This would be Councilman Zacharias. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that we're all speaking the same language here. Do you understand that if this rezoning application does not pass today, it does not mean that that property can't be developed. It just means that it can only be developed as apartments or something else that goes with C2. It's not a choice of nothing or possibly apartments or possibly single-family. The zoning is going to be in place, and then whatever is allowed to be built under that zoning can be built.
Yes, I apologize. This is like my first Senate council meeting and everything.
Yeah.
But I do understand that I, I'm sure there is like desire to build something there because of how much land is back there, but I just would like to express my concerns. And hopefully, whatever is planned back there to be built, they would, again, take into consideration mainly the flooding that it could cause behind our homes.
Thank you.
Any more comment or question for Mr. Marchant? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak against Ordinance 111? We offer rebuttal. If you're in favor of Ordinance 111, wish to offer rebuttal, please come forward. Okay, we're now ready for Item E, Ordinance 112, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Clarksville, Tennessee, as it pertains to updating the Clarksville design overlay districts to include Fort Campbell Boulevard and Tiny Town Road corridors. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of Ordinance 112? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against Ordinance 112? We're now ready for Item F, Resolution 69, 2024-25, a resolution adopting a final plan of services progress report for the annexed property north of Hancock Road and east of International Boulevard. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of Resolution 69? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against Ordinance 69? Item G, Resolution 70, 2024-25, a resolution adopting a plan of services progress report for the annexed property north of Garrett'sburg Road and Clyde Court. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of Resolution 70? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against Ordinance Resolution 70? Next item, Item H, Resolution 71, 2024-25, a resolution adopting a final plan of services progress report for annexed territory east of International Boulevard. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of Resolution 71? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against Resolution 71? Councilman Streetman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move we go back into regular session.
Motion been made and properly seconded to revert to regular session. Councilman Streetman.
As a reminder, all motion, based on legal counsel advice, all motions are made in the form of approval. Ordinance 108, 2024-25, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the City of Clarksville, application of faith investments for a zone change on a partial fronting on the western frontage of Alpine Drive, approximately 420 feet south of the West Dunbar Cave Road. of the West Dunbar Cave Road and Alpine Drive intersection from O1 Office District to M1 Light Industrial District. Both the Regional Planning Commission and the staff recommend approval and I so move.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of Ordinance 108. Any comment or question from council regarding Ordinance 108? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Thirteen yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 108 passes first reading. Councilman Streetman.
Ordinance 109, 2024-25, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the city of Clarksville, application of Christian Innovative Enterprises LLC for a zone change on a parcel of land fronting on the north frontage of Kennedy Road at the terminus of Stone Bluff Way and Kennedy Road intersection from AG Agricultural District to R2A Single Family Residential District. Both the Regional Planning Commission and the staff recommend approval and I so move.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of Ordinance 109. Any comment or question from council regarding one on, Ordinance 109? Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Honor. Your Honor, Mayor. Spent too much time in court.
As a police officer.
Not as a defendant. I have some concerns about this. Uh, of course, I wasn't here for the meeting Thursday night, uh, but I did watch it several times on the replay. And my concerns were I heard one statement being made that, well, we just close off Kennedy Road. Then another statement, no, we're not going to close Kennedy Road. Well, then, and then another statement, well, they're going to use, they can't use Kennedy Road, not going to let them use it when they exit it. And then another statement, well, what's going to stop them from it? I just think we need to be careful with this because Kennedy Road is a city street and if we put this in and six months, a year, year and a half goes by, well, we got it widened Kennedy Road because of all the traffic on it. Right now, that road won't handle any more traffic than, than it already travels on it, which is very light travel, but when we start putting more people in the area, that's my only concern about this and uh, I'll probably vote no, thank you.
Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, just in reference to the statements, I can understand why there was confusion because I, I myself wasn't even sure where abandoning the road came about in the conversation because I'm not aware of any intentions by the city to abandon that road. But um, it is also my understanding that there have already been improvements made to Kennedy Road and obviously in that area, they'll have to do, you know, so my assumption is the street department will have them make some improvements right along there where the development is occurring. It's not a large amount that's going to be going in there and I think they have tried to be very diligent in everything that they've been doing through this process in order to be able to bring this forward to us. I know he referenced talking to many of us on the council. I was one that talked to him as well. I'll be supporting this measure and I really appreciate everything they've tried to do and answer any of the questions of the council as well as the RPC staff working with the street department and everyone. Like I said, they've been diligent through the whole process and I'm grateful to them for being that way.
Any more comment or question regarding Ordinance 109? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Twelve yes, one no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 109 passes first reading. We're now, Councilman Streetman.
Ordinance 110, 2024-25, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the city of Clarksville, application of ransom S. Ritter Jr. for a zone change on a parcel of land fronting on the northwest intersection of Needmore Road and Thrush Drive from R1 Single Family Residential District to R5 Residential District. Both the Regional Planning Commission and the staff recommended disapproval. I so move for approval.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of Ordinance 110. Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to say, you know, this is in my ward and I've talked to several of the neighbors and with the flooding there, uh, it just doesn't fit into this subdivision. It's just too drastic of a change from the R1. I would just like to see them leave it as R1. If they ended up dividing it, you know, into a couple houses, that'd be fine, but going to R5 is just not practical for this area. That would take up a lot of the grass that does absorb some of the water, uh, and that would just put more flooding down into those streams that go into the backyards of houses as they are. So I'm going to be voting no on this and I ask for everyone else to vote no also.
Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you. I agree with everything that was stated by the council member before me and I just did not think this makes sense as a move to get, make such a drastic jump from R1 to R5. And the historic number that could go in there is 32 units as opposed to, I believe it was possibly four to six that could go in there as it currently stands as R1. And like he said, it in no way fits in there. It is 100% surrounded by R1 and as was stated in the public comments, I've, I've grown up knowing, uh, my grandmother lived over in that area back in the day and I remember all the flooding that would occur and the way the water would move through there and have seen pictures and stuff even since that time. So I too will be a no vote on this one, just as I have been in the past when this has come for us, before us.
Thank you. Any more comment or question from council regarding Ordinance 110? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Zero yes, thirteen no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 110 fails. Councilman Streetman.
Ordinance 111, 2024-25, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning code and map of the city of Clarksville, application of Running M Properties LLC for a zone change on property located south of West Concord Drive, east of Fort Campbell Boulevard and accessed approximately 260 feet south of the Fort Campbell Boulevard and Concord Drive intersection from C2 General Commercial District to R2 Single Family Residential District. Both the Regional Planning Commission and the staff recommended approval and I so move.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of Ordinance 111. Councilman Streetman.
Thank you, sir. I would also like a, to make a motion based on the request of the applicant, that this be deferred until the August meeting for the city council for votes.
Motion been made and properly seconded to defer Ordinance 1 or postpone Ordinance 111 until the August 2025 regular session. Council, uh, comments or questions regarding the motion to postpone? Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
You cut my light off. I was going to do the same thing.
Okay, all right. Your light's been cut off. Any other? No, sir. Wouldn't dare do that. Any other comment or question regarding the motion to postpone Ordinance 111? Seeing none, hearing none, as soon as the clerk gets us typed up here, we'll be voting on the motion to postpone until August 2025 regular session. It's a lot, a lot harder than it looks when you got 12 people, 13 people staring over their shoulder. August 2025 regular session. Okay, we're now ready to vote on the postponement of Ordinance 111 until the August regular session. We will correct that. Scribner's error. We're good. Yeah, we're good. Everybody, legislative intent is August 2025. Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Thirteen yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Motion to postpone passes. Councilman Streetman.
Ordinance 112, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance of the city of Clarksville, Tennessee, as it pertains to updating the Clarksville design overlay districts to include Fort Campbell Boulevard and Tiny Town Road corridor. The Regional Planning Commission staff thought the standards would be best implemented as part of the zoning rewrite or citywide. However, the Regional Planning Commission voted in favor of approval and I so move.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of Ordinance 112. Any comment or question? Councilman Zacharias, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I did receive a phone call uh, from a, a property owner on Tiny Town with some concerns uh, and I mentioned, or I told him that I would uh, share with, with the council that, that there were some concerns about setbacks. Uh, personally, I'm okay voting uh, yes on this and then trying to get some more information about his specific concerns and see if they've been adequately addressed, um, and then bring those back up before second reading. But again, like I said, I just wanted to uh, to make sure I passed on that uh, there is at least one property owner on Tiny Town that has some concerns.
Thank you. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, based on the conversation at executive session last week from my colleague from Ward Five, um, I put together a spreadsheet because, you know, I speak spreadsheets, that's how I understand things. And I did a setback comparison on building height, story comparison from the existing Madison Street corridor overlay, which is highlighted in green, um, compared to the proposed sub-districts, uh, in blue is a Fort Campbell Boulevard design overlay and then purple is the Tiny Town Road overlay. And highlighted in green is what matches the existing proven Madison Street corridor overlay. Um, so this is just one page that kind of explains things. There is also, um, I also heard some concerns about parking on the front. On the bottom section about parking, um, it does not forbid, or does not require parking in the side and rear across all the corridors. There are two corridors that will allow for it, um, one of which is Dover Crossing and then also in transition zones where you have collector roads, it would also be permitted. So it's not eliminating um, parking in the front across all of the corridors. And if anybody has any questions, Mr. Tindall so graciously um, attended tonight in case we have any, need any clarifying information or have questions for him.
Thank you. Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as the sponsor of the previous design overlay that came forward for the Martin Luther King Boulevard area, I'm very supportive of the design overlays, just as that um, area is a entrance to our community, so are these other areas and I think they're very important um, to our community that we have these standards in place for the benefit of our community. This is something that uh, has waited a long time as well. It was waiting for the other one to come back to be able to move forward with this. Um, I first heard this one mentioned when I brought forward the other one five years ago. So I know a lot has developed, uh, a lot has developed during that time and it would have been much better to have had it before. However, this is where we are today and I think it's important that we do go ahead and approve this and have this in place because again, this is for the benefit of our community. I think there are a lot of people that are very supportive of these um, throughout Clarksville that want to see these standards in place.
Councilman Markey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the spreadsheet. I do appreciate uh, this type of information. I did want to just, um, the reason I brought that up last week was because it was brought to my attention. I just wanted to let the council know that there were concerns involved with that. I did reach out to multiple um, department heads and they've like reviewed the numbers. They believe they can work with it, so everything's good there. Um, and then I just wanted to say that um, for, for the sake of consistency, uh, back in December, I did mention that I, I was voting no on the original um, ordinance that brought this currently to place. Uh, and I, I will do the same only because again, I did vote no for Madison and it's only fair to be consistent in that matter, uh, to, for me to wait for the read right. Thank you.
Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I received a call today from a engineering firm that has some questions about the five-foot setback and also a email. Like Councilman Zacharias, I will be voting in favor of it. Give me another month to find out. I want them to tell me exactly what it is that they're so concerned about and give me some good examples.
Thank you. Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I have some concerns with this also, uh, you know, some of my concerns with the parking on the side and back is, you know, is law enforcement's driving down the road, they'll be driving down Tiny Town Road and cannot see the parking lots from the street. So when an officer's driving around the road, they're looking at what's going on on the side of the road, the businesses, and if they can't see the parking lot as they're driving through, because they're saying there has to be some kind of barrier, you know, between that and the road, they won't be able to see the parking lots. And so people leaving these businesses are going to be, you know, not visible from the road. So it, you know, I hate to say it, but it gives criminals more opportunity for, to be hidden, you know, from visibility of being seen. So I have some concerns about that and, you know, and the number of crashes that we have, if we've got buildings that are five foot off the road, we're going to have cars going through buildings and into the business that can injure additional people in there. So those are just some of my concerns on this and I just wanted to voice those and I'll probably be voting against it.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, I did forget to mention in my previous comments that um, as mentioned before last week, um, that there is an appeal process if somebody wants to appeal what the variances and setbacks are. There are actually two places you can go, um, the design review board and also um, the planning commission staff can work to, to address those, especially on the mention of the hospital. Um, and then also, um, I just want to reiterate the fact that the Madison Street corridor overlay has been in place since 2010-ish and it has the exact same setbacks as mentioned um, in, in this overlay presentation. So, thank you. I also want to thank planning commission for all their work and the fact that they held two public meetings to get the people on Tiny Town Road and also on Fort Campbell Boulevard out to attend.
Thank you. Any more comment or question regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Seven yes, five no, one abstain.
Ordinance 112 passes first reading. Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Without objection, um, I'd like to take up the next three resolutions as one motion.
Any objection to taking items F, G, and H in one motion? Seeing none, you're recognized.
Resolution 69, 2024-25, a resolution adopting a final plan of services progress report for annexed property north of Hancock Road and east of International Boulevard. Resolution 70, 2024-25, a resolution adopting a plan of services progress report for annexed territory north of Garrett'sburg Road and Clyde Court. Resolution 71, 2024-25, a resolution adopting a final plan of services progress report for annexed territory east of International Boulevard. I make a motion for approval.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of Resolutions 69, 70, and 71. Any comment or question regarding these three resolutions? Seeing none, hearing none, just give the clerk a minute to get us teed up. Okay, all members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Thirteen yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Resolutions 69, 70, and 71 are adopted. Councilman Streetman.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. We're now ready for the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
All items in this portion of the agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and may be approved by one motion. However, a member of the council may request that an item be removed for separate consideration under the appropriate committee report. Ordinance 83, 2024-25, second reading, an ordinance amending the official code of the city of Clarksville, Title IV Building Utility and Housing Codes, Chapter VI Property Maintenance Code, to be, to provide needed updates. updates, add provisions regarding penalties, and clarify requirements for property maintenance in commercial and residential zones. Ordinance eighty-five, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, second reading. An ordinance amending Title II Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter I Beer of the Official City Code to amend Section 2-105 Classes of Permits, Subparagraph 4 Special Events Permit. Ordinance eighty-six, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, second reading. Zoning, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville application of Audrey Short Rothstein for a zone change on a partial fronting on the south frontage of Tiny Town Road, three hundred and thirty-five plus or minus feet east of Pembroke Road and Tiny Town Road from A Airport to C five Highway and Arterio Commercial District. Ordinance eighty-nine, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, second reading. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville application of Milan Holdings LLC for a zone change on a lot fronting on the west frontage of Industrial Drive, three hundred and ninety plus or minus feet north of West Dunbar Cave Road and Industrial Drive intersection from M one Light Industrial District to C five Highway and Arterio Commercial District. Resolution seventy-two, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. A resolution approving appointments to the Power Board and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Resolution seventy-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. A resolution approving a certificate of compliance for sale of wine in a food store at Quick Stock Market located at six thirty Tiny Town Road, Suite one oh five Clarksville, Tennessee, and adoption of minutes for June fifth, twenty twenty-five, and June twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll entertain a motion and a second. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of the consent agenda. Anyone wish to be recognized on the consent agenda? Councilman McLaughlin.
Thank you. I'd like to register no votes on ordinance eighty-six and eighty-nine, please.
Thank you. Councilman Lovato, you're recognized on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to register a no vote on ordinance eighty-nine.
Thank you. Anybody wish, anybody else wish to be recognized on the consent agenda? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Thirteen yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Consent agenda is adopted. We're now ready for the Finance Committee. Chairman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Without objection, I would like to take up ordinances ninety-eight through ordinance one oh two, so items A through E as one motion.
Any objection to taking those five ordinances up at one time? Seeing none, you're recognized.
Ordinance ninety-eight, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, first reading. An ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from Whitetail Development Partnership Property to the city of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance ninety-nine, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, first reading. An ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from CBP Properties to the city of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance one hundred, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, first reading. An ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from Holly Point LLC to the city of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance one oh one, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. An ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from The Main Street Investments TNGP to the city of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance one oh two, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, first reading. An ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from River Chase LLC to the city of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. The Finance Committee voted in favor of approval of all ordinances.
Motion been made and-
I make a motion for approval.
And properly seconded in favor of ordinances ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one hundred, one oh one, and one oh two. Properly seconded. Any comment or question regarding those five ordinances? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? We're voting on ordinances one oh, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one hundred, one oh one, one oh two. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Twelve yes.
Ordinances ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one hundred, one oh one, and one oh two passes first reading. Chairman Streitman.
Ordinance one oh four, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property for the purpose of constructing affordable housing in partnership with Montgomery County Habitat for Humanity. The Finance Committee recommended, voted in favor of approval, and I so move.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of ordinance one oh four. Councilman Streitman, you're recog, or McLaughlin, excuse me, you're recognized, sorry.
Sometimes I'm Councilman Lovato. My following comment will be for ordinance one oh four, one oh five, and one oh six. At my town hall meeting last night, there were some questions about was the city using city general funds for these three projects, and I explained that they came from federally-funded Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds, and they were all in favor of that. So I just wanted to put that out on the record for other people that might have questioned that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to know where would this real property be for the purpose of constructing affordable homes? In what area do we know, or is this?
We have, I think this one's on Ford Street. This one is on Ford Street. Ordinance one oh four.
Ford and Cheryl? Is that Ford and, nah?
Ford.
And nah? Oh, no.
It's on, just on Ford Street.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
And that's also, I know we're looking at one oh six, same thing? That be in the same area?
No, it's different, different area. We'll get to that in just a moment.
All right.
But we'll be ready if you'll text me the addresses. All right. Thank you. Any more comment or question regarding ordinance one oh four? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Twelve yes, zero no, one abstain.
One oh, ordinance one oh four passes first reading. All right, we're now ready for ordinance one oh five, and that would be Chairman Streitman. Wow, get me out of here.
Ordinance one oh five, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into an agreement for the acquisition of real property for the purpose of providing transitional housing for families participating in the CMCSS Families in Transition Program. The Finance Committee recommended approval and I so move.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of ordinance one oh five. Councilmember Smith, you're recognized. Okay, the question is, where is it located? Seventeen oh nine Manning, near Piska Elementary.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any more comment or question regarding ordinance one oh five? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Thirteen yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Ordinance one oh five passes first reading. Chairman Streitman.
Ordinance one oh six, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property for the purpose of constructing affordable housing in partnership with the Appalachian Service Project. The Finance Committee voted and recommended approval and I so move.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of ordinance one oh six. Councilman Smith.
Same thing, Mayor.
Same question. The address is thirteen twenty-one Cedar Street.
Uh huh, I thought that was-
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any more comment or question regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Thirteen yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Ordinance one oh six passes first reading. Chairman Streitman.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We're ready for Gas and Water Committee. Chairman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, and for our sign language partners, I will try to read slower than I did last one. Thank you. Just a reminder to the public, as we spoke last month, the Gas and Waters Annual Drinking Water Quality Report was included in the summer issue of Service Line Magazine, which was delivered to all Clarksville Gas and Water customers by mail. Links to the report and magazine are available from the Clarksville Gas and Water website, and there is also a link on everybody's most recent billing invoice. Additional copies are available at the Clarksville Gas and Water Lobby Location, City Hall, and other public places in the community. Gas and Water would like to congratulate several employees on earning state certifications during the spring 2025 testing session upon passing a rigorous exam involving scenario, informational, and math equation questions concerning all areas of water distribution or wastewater collection systems or treatment plants. Those employees earning their Tennessee Grade Two Water Distribution Certificate are as follows. Matthew Schooler, Robert Samborsky, Jacob Covington, Chris Cook, Rocco Elrod, and Nicole Lor, earning the Tennessee Grade Three Water Treatment Certificate, Lakin Blaine. Earning the Tennessee Grade Four Water Treatment Certificate are Jack Brown and Anthony Jordan. Those earning the Tennessee Grade Three Wastewater Treatment Certification are Paul Bratcher, Bradley Ruble, and Josh Bent. And earning his Tennessee Grade Four Wastewater Treatment Certification is William Barber. Congratulations to these employees for continuing to get certified to make them better employees. That concludes my report.
Thank you. It's harder than it looks to read slow, wouldn't it? All right, thank you. Any comment or question regarding Gas and Water Committee report? Now ready for Neighborhood and Community Services Committee. Chairman Chiquina, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Neighborhood and Community Services Committee report for July as follows. We have our committee meeting on the fourteenth of July at four thirty PM on the fourth floor of City Hall in the conference room. Our city has been approved for FEMA Individual Assistance Disaster Relief funding to help with recovery efforts after severe flooding was experienced in April 2025. A FEMA Disaster Recovery Center is currently open and is located at the Montgomery County Public Library, three five zero Pageant Lane, Suite five zero one. That's on the second floor in the genealogy room, and it's open during business hours of the library. So many of our residents that have experienced flooding, severe flooding due to the recent weather-related incidents or events, you may want to go there in person to speak to a FEMA representative. We also have representatives from the Financial Empowerment Fund here in Clarksville today and tomorrow to meet with the Community Neighborhood and Community Services Team, Mayor Pitts, the Financial Empowerment Advisory Committee, potential funders, the Clarksville Canopy Initiative, and nonprofit partners at the Mayor's Summer Night Lights event. So these meetings represent the next step in planning and developing a partially grant-funded financially empowered empowerment center here in this city. So the future of Clarksville's Financial Empowerment Center will offer free one-on-one financial counseling and coaching to all members of the community regardless of income. Services will include assistance with budgeting, debt reduction, credit improvement, long-term financial planning, including legacy and estates planning. The initiative is a significant step towards enhancing financial stability for Clarksville residents. So if you or your organization wish to learn more about partnering with the Clarksville's Financial Empowerment Center, please contact Community and Neighborhood Services. Next, I want to mention that our department's new rental assistance program opened today. That rental assistance program is here to assist income-eligible households that are facing financial hardship, and there's priority for assistance. And right now, we're definitely looking at rent payments for helping individuals that are sixty-plus, sixty-two-plus and over, so our seniors, and then families with children, victims of domestic violence, and lastly, individuals with disabilities. So again, we're focusing on the seniors sixty-two and over, families with disabilities, families with children, victims of domestic violence, and individuals with disabilities. Lastly, I just want to mention, as I always do, that you're invited to follow Clarksville Neighborhood and Community Services on Facebook for more information on these topics, as well as cooling shelters and other programs. This concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comment or question regarding this committee report? We're now ready for the Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Zacharias, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start off, before I start with the report, I do want to announce that Parks and Rec broke ground on the pedestrian bridge connecting the North and South Greenway this morning. It goes over the Red River. It's got an anticipated completion date of March 2026. For those that are familiar with that project, know it's been a long time coming, and I'm glad to see that off the ground. Parks and Rec Department invites you to join us at Liberty Park on Wednesday, July third, from five o'clock to nine thirty PM for an evening of live music, family fun, and I think there's going to be some fireworks also as we celebrate Independence Day in style. Thursday. What's it, Ron Burgundy in Anchorman? Just put it in front of me, I'll read it. The Clarksville Downtown Markets Farm-to-Dinner Table is more than a meal. It's a tribute to those who grow, raise, and craft the food that nourishes our community. This year's dinner will take place on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, from five to eight PM, and tickets are available. The Wonder Kids Triathlon is back on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, at Beach Haven Pool from nine AM to eleven thirty AM. This non-timed swim, bike, and run event is designed for kids ages three to twelve to enjoy friendly competition in a supportive environment. Clarksville Parks and Rec is always looking for the next great employee. We're looking for people to fill part-time positions as gym assistants, Parks and Rec instructors, special events setup and maintenance, and a weekend facility manager. And for more information and a complete list of programs, classes, and ongoing activities, visit clarksvilpparksrec.com or check out the app on the App Store or the Google Play Store. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Burgundy. We're now ready for Public Safety Committee. Chairman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have Building and Codes. The Construction Division did three thousand one hundred and seventy total inspections. Code Enforcement Division did four hundred and fifty-five new cases. The Abatement Division did forty-one work hours, work orders, and total revenue generated was almost four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. For Clarksville Police Department, they have a couple of announcements. We are prepped and ready for the Staffing, Security, and Logistics with the July third fireworks. Coffee with a Cop will be at Cairo's Coffee House on July tenth from eight AM to ten AM, and that is three two nine Warfield Boulevard. We would like to thank Officer Jeff Derico, who has organized a backpack giveaway for kids in need. That will be July twelfth at Park Lane Church, that is two two five Cunningham Lane. And the badge blood drive is on July twenty-second from nine AM to three PM. You do not have to have a badge to give, everyone is welcome. It will be CPD, Clarksville Fire Rescue, Montgomery County EMS, and Montgomery County Sheriff Office will all be represented. For Clarksville Fire and Rescue, we will be starting the Next Academy on July twenty-eighth with fourteen new hires to fill the current vacancies. Special Operations Chief Butch McCurdy represented CFR at the Tennessee Fallen Firefighter Memorial by helping in a day of maintenance and upkeep. And Captain Sherret Cobb, technician in Garrett Hogan, and EMR Chase Melton recently completed the FEMA Eighty-Hour Structural Collapse and Specialist Course. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any comment or question regarding this committee report? Now ready for Transportation, Streets, and Garage Committee. Chairman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. The TSG reports for the month of June are as follows. CTS transported a total of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and ten riders for the month of June. Also, on the fixed routes, there was a total of thirty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-seven riders, which include eight thousand twenty-six seniors who rode for free. On the paratransit route, there was four thousand and twenty-three riders. Our next report is the Street Department. They had a total of three hundred and seventy-four work orders for the month of June, one thousand one hundred and seventy-six brush tickets picked up, and also for sidewalks- And also, for sidewalks, Ringo sidewalks are 75% completed. And Hazelwood Road sidewalks are 50% completed. Our next report is now the City Garage. The total number of work hours for the month of June was 363. The total number of part costs for all city vehicles was $72,605.79. The total of tire costs for all city vehicles was $15,510.55. Few purchases made at the City Garage for unleaded total was $90,225.47 for a total gallon of 39,495. Diesel total cost at the pumps was $28,507.45. Diesel total gallons was $11,900. Fuel cost for unleaded was $2.18 per gallon. The last delivery was June 25th, which was a decrease of 4% from 227 on May of 2725. Fuel cost for diesel was $2,046.00 per gallon. The last delivery was in June of 27, and there was an increase of 12.8% from 2018 cents. This concludes my report, but our next meeting, let me say, will be July 8th at 3:30. And happy Fourth of July to all, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment or question regarding this committee report? Next item on our agenda is new business, the public lottery drawing pertaining to the retail liquor store certificates of compliance. Mr. Bittner is going to give us a quick refresher of the process, and then we will go about drawing names for the eleven certificates of compliance. Mr. Bittner, you're recognized.
Okay. I'll start with Ordinance 114, which we passed November 7th of '24. If you recall, we're, in our code, we have one liquor store for every 6,000 residents. We were granting two additional retail liquor stores every even-numbered year to allow us to get to the number that we're allowed to have based on our population, which would be 27. The Ordinance 114, which was effective today, July 1st, we increased the number of liquor stores up to the maximum number that could be allowed under the United States Census, which was 27. We also added the restrictions of 500 feet from a liquor store to a park, religious institution, or school. And no liquor store could be closer than 1,500 feet to another liquor store. So reading from Section 2214 of our code, we're here tonight to do the certificate of compliances for the city. We'll be doing eleven certificate of compliance. To give notice of the drawing, the clerk put a notice in the newspaper and accepted applications for eleven, excuse me, 20 days. When she received those applications, we forwarded them to the Police Department for a criminal background check, which they, the list tonight represents the individuals that pass that background check. Their store locations is listed on the application. We're then forwarded to the Building and Codes Department to determine if they were properly zoned, which the ones on the list were. And then that brings us here to tonight. Since we have more applications, then we have certificate of compliance that are eligible to be dispersed. We're going to move into a public lottery. So the way we'll do the public lottery, the clerk has pre-prepared separate strips of paper of equal dimensions with the name of each applicant on the strip of paper. The strip of paper has been folded twice and placed in an OPEC container, brown container. We're going to ask the mayor's designee to draw from the OPEC container 11 strips of paper equal to the number of open certificates of compliance. Well, I guess we'll draw slowly so that we can compare the drawing to the restrictions to make sure the individual that is drawn complies with the new alcoholic restrictions that we have. I will mention again, any applicant that does not make an application for a retail liquor store license within 120 days can have their certificate of compliance repealed. Okay?
Hang on. Before you get gone, Ms. Harpel and Ms. Jenkins will stand at the well, and Ms. Jenkins will draw from the bag the name, and Ms. Jenkins will announce the name.
Okay.
And we'll do it slowly. And then when we get to 11, we'll cease there, and then we'll vote on the resolution adopting those 11 names.
That's correct.
But before they, they can go ahead and take their place, but Councilman Brown, you're recognized for a question.
Thank you. So I have a question. As we go through this, the distance from another liquor store has to be 1,500 feet?
1,500 feet, according to what we passed.
So if, if one of them we pick is a particular address that's on here that has four or five applicants, nobody else will be able to, if we draw another one that has that same, they'll be disqualified?
That's correct. That's correct. That's why we'll go slow tonight.
Yeah. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And just when you said you'd compare them to the GIS report, are you able to add in ones that are drawn to make sure that there are other, aren't other ones drawn that are within that distance?
Yes. The court clerk has prepared a list, and she's grouped them by the 1,500-foot measurement. So when we draw an applicant, the others that are within 1,500 feet of that applicant's location will be removed.
That's the color codes?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I love a color code.
On the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney, I got a letter from a person who said that several people applied for a liquor license. They put in this drawing, but they used the same address. And it said it was, it was his address for his liquor store, and he didn't authorize it. So how do we do that if we draw these people's names who has applied for liquor store but using the same address? Fifteen may have used the same address. How would we work that?
If they cannot secure a lease for that location, which if the individual is not pre-approved it, then after the 120 days, you can revoke the certificate of compliance and reissue it to somebody that does have a proper location.
Also, if it will be at the same place, it wouldn't be 1,500 feet away anyway.
That's correct.
If they're applying for the same place.
That's correct. So are you saying?
So they would be disqualified. That would disqualify.
Are you saying there's a location now?
Mm-hmm. It was a guy that wrote a letter.
Okay. I think that the clerk did see that, and I think that we did remove the applicants that were.
With the same address.
That's correct.
Applying for the same, we did.
I believe that's correct. I saw an email for that, that they were removed.
Okay.
If they were within 1,500 feet of an existing store, and I think what you're speaking of is maybe a store that was just moved or in the process of moving.
No, there were several applicants who applied for license for a liquor store for the same address.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Right. So if they're within 1,500 feet of another liquor store, or when the individual is drawn within 1,500 feet, they will be taken out of the drawing.
All right.
So we'll go, we'll go slowly, and they've got their charts color coordinated.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Ms. Harpel, Ms. Jenkins, if you would, please go to the well in full view of the camera and the crowd. Use the microphone. Ms. Harpel, if you'll make sure that the microphone is on. Mr. Pulli, if you'll make sure that the handheld mic volume is up so we can hear clearly. Ms. Harpel will hold the bag. Ms. Jenkins will pull the name and announce the name slowly.
Liquor Shop, 1487 Madison Street. Liquor Drive, 2681 Fort Campbell Boulevard. Tiny Town Wine and Spirits, 102 Burl Way. Partial 04116901000. Does not yet have an address.
Mayor, this is not on the list. So I think we would need to, this particular one might have to be set aside from, for this drawing until we can verify with the Building and Codes Department and the Police Department, the application, make sure it was pre-approved to be in the drawing today.
Okay. Mr. Bittner, if you wouldn't mind, give us the name again so we'll make sure we get everything on the record clearly.
Quarts and Cups, 1,001 Creek Way.
Okay. Councilman Zacharias, you have a question about this issue?
Yes, Mayor. Would it be worth it to, I think in golf, they call it a provisional, just draw another name just in case this one does not pan out?
Mr. Bittner, is that allowed under city code?
We're only supposed to draft 11. The, the issue, what would you do on the resolution? And I, you have to take these up tonight, and you're going to be not able to approve Quarts and Cups, and you're not able to approve the ones that you draft again. So I would recommend that you not do that, and that you come back, I guess we'll have to come back and put this, do the resolution for the 10 of them, and we'll have to postpone this one for one month while we look at the restrictions and make sure it complies.
Councilman Zacharias.
That's on there.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. That's the address that was removed because the property owner emailed and said that that was their address, and they didn't give permission for anybody else to have a liquor store there. Those are the ones that are removed from this list that were on the previous list.
Okay. Let me slide around. You could be right. There is a name marked out on, I'm going to just slide around.
I'm going to look at the executive session agenda. Mr. Bittner, here's the executive session agenda where they were listed, and I had communication with the applicant or the person whose address it was, and he verified that we said remove those addresses. That they're the ones listed at the top. That was what's executive session, and these are the ones that are here today. Okay.
So, Mr. Bittner, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of refresh us on where the posture, where we are.
Okay. So we had 1,001 Creek Way initially. Okay, so we had 1001 Creek Way initially listed on the executive session agenda. There was some discussions with the court clerk regarding the address, whether or not it was an acceptable applicant. It determines that the applicant was not acceptable with this address, so this Quarks and Cups should have been removed from the drawing, so we'll set that to the side and draw the 11th and final applicant.
Okay. Before we do that, we've got two people. Councilman Haywood, did you wish to ask a question?
Yes, Mayor. Warfield Liquor, without it having an address, do you suggest we approve that one or put it aside until it has an address?
We're approving the location of it, so my guess is that it just does not have a 911 address. I do recall... I do recall this coming up with the court clerk, and then she did take it down to the Building and Coats Department, and they did determine that it was zoned correctly for it, so that one will pass.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Chandler on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. We better tread lightly on this.
That's correct.
And the reason I'm saying that is now, instead of the one that we drew that wasn't supposed to be there, now we've got another one that, well, the address, we don't too, you know, and you're presenting it to this board as fact. And the thing about it is, what I'm concerned about is, I know what email, but you're an attorney.
That's correct.
And the thing about it is, when you have something, you have to authenticate that email, and it has not been authenticated.
The list was attached to the executive section agenda, and I believe there was some discussion with the court clerk that those were to be disqualified, and that it just was not pulled from there. Now... When you say it's not authenticated, we don't have the court clerk here in the room with us?
Well, that, we don't know. The email, you know, I can send... I can get you and send an email with your name on it anywhere.
Correct.
And, you know, what happens? This guy jumps up and says, "Well, wait a minute. I'm just... I'm trying to protect us, is all I'm trying to do." And honestly and truthfully, I hate to do this and hate to say this, but the ones that's already been drawn to that point, let them stay. And until we get this cleared up and redone, then we come back and draw the rest of them.
We can come back next month, but we have to... We would have to have it heard next month, because if we wait past the 60 days, then it's granted. So, we could come back and do that next month when the court clerk is here.
Just saying, we gotta tread lightly on this.
That's correct. Now, there is no... There is no property right in the certificate of compliance forms. The actual liquor license itself is a state license issued by the state of Tennessee. What the certificate of compliance that we're issuing tonight is that they pass the background check and their location is properly zoned, and we give that certificate of compliance to them, and they take it up to state. So, I understand your concern. I know nobody wants to defend a lawsuit for certificate of compliance if we were appealed to the Chancery Court, but given the discussions that I know the court clerk had, I do recall that those Creek Way addresses were to be removed. We could pass the 10 tonight, come back and do the 1 next month, make sure what we're doing is correct, and still make it within the 60-day limit of the drawing.
I'm just throwing it out there, so whatever you decide, we go in.
Sure, sure.
Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to get some clarity on what number two name was versus number 10. It sounded like they're the same liquor stores, name. Can you tell?
Liquor Barrel was number two. Barrel and Bottle Liquor Store is number 10.
Okay, two different locations.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bittner, are you able to look on the GIS and see if the application was recently approved for the Creek Way?
Am I personally able to do that?
Well, do you guys have a picture of where the locations are? The person that owns the address is texting me and said the reason that it was removed is because there was an application already approved for that location previously. But you probably can verify that for people who have questions about that on the GIS.
That's correct. I mean, we could... If we would take... If you want to take a recess for five minutes, cover the restroom, and come back.
Mr. Bittner, is five minutes enough of a recess to be able to answer this question?
Maybe 10 minutes.
Okay. Okay. Members, we will recess without objection until 7:50 PM. 7:50 PM.
Thank you.
We're in recess. Okay. Ms. Harpel, Ms. Jenkins? You'll get the microphone handy.
Need More Wine &amp; Spirits, 2699 Trenton Road.
Okay, that's number 11. Madam Clerk, if you'll bring me all the slips. What we will do is I will reread the 11, and then I will ask for a motion on Resolution 73 that will encompass all 11 names. Resolution 73 pertains to Need More Wine &amp; Spirits, 2699 Trenton Road, Clarksville Liquor Warehouse, 2804 Wilmer Rudolph Boulevard, Clarksville Discount Liquor, 267 Stone Crossing, Tiny Town Wine &amp; Spirits, 102 Burl Way, Warfield Liquor, parcel number 041, that's in the map, Clarksville Bottle Shop, 924 Providence Boulevard, Liquor Drive, 2681 Fort Campbell Boulevard, Liquor Barrel, 2030 Wilmer Rudolph Boulevard, Barrel &amp; Bottle Liquor Store, 447 Warfield Boulevard, Planet Liquors, 2690 Madison Street, Liquor Shop, 1487 Madison Street. Those are the 11 names that will pertain to Resolution 73. I will entertain a motion and a second. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of Resolution 73. Any comment or question from council regarding Resolution 73? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
11 yes, 1 no, 0 abstain.
Resolution 73 is adopted. We are now ready for mayor and council member comments. Any member of council have a comment? Councilman Peters, you're recognized.
I want to address, thank you first of all, Mayor. I want to address the social media people who say I flip-flopped on the budget vote and then didn't attend the meeting to vote on it. I'm just like you, I have life events that happened. I couldn't be here, but rest assured, I say for the record that I would have voted yes to pass it, because it gave you safety at officers, firemen, and codes enforcement. No member on this council voted to pass a 4% budget. So get it right, it's a 4 cent, not a 4% budget. Members on this council did pass the amendments to that budget. So therefore, I see no reason for us to put off a vote. So that's why I had it reconsidered. The amendments were passed, the budget was what it was, and that's what it is. So for the record, I would have voted yes. Thank you.
Councilman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. With the Fourth of July coming up here in just a few days, I just want to remind everybody to please have a safe holiday. If you're going to be on the roads or on the water, please be mindful of how much alcohol you're having and not put yourself in a dangerous situation. And if you are going to be driving either a boat or a vehicle, please designate a driver so that you can not only celebrate the holiday this week, but many more holidays to come. I also want to tell everybody to be safe in choosing to shoot off their own fireworks. For one, let, to let you know that starting today, fireworks can be exploded, fired, shot, or set off inside the city corporate limits from today until July 5th between the hours of 6:00 and 10:00 PM, except for city-conducted or sponsored events. It is unlawful for any person, organization, group, or entity to possess, use, explode, fire, or shoot or set off any types of fireworks from within any city park, recreation facility, or property. And it's also unlawful for any person under 16 to use, explode, or possess any fireworks within the city limits. And again, I'd like everybody to be careful, and the best way to be careful is just come out to Liberty Park on July 3rd and enjoy the city's festivities as well as the fireworks that they'll be shooting off, or on July 4th, or and on July 4th, head out to Fort Campbell and enjoy their festivities as well. Both have a great fireworks celebration, so that'll save you, and you'll be perfectly safe in that way. But if you would like more information and safety tips on shooting off fireworks, please visit clarksvilletn.gov, click on News, and then click on the story, "Fireworks, Regulations, and Safety Tips from Clarksville Fire and Rescue," so that you can do it in a safe manner, and have a wonderful Fourth of July.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind the public that the annual reading of the Declaration of Independence will take place at the Montgomery County Historic Courthouse at 9:00 AM on the Fourth of July. It's a good idea to be there for part of that. Different people have speaking roles, and leading up to the 250th birthday of our country next year. Thank you.
Councilman Zachariah, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate the Tennessee Department of Human Services. They got a brand-new field management director for their Davidson County SNAP office this morning, and she's pretty cute, too. So congratulations, Jen. I'm really proud of you.
Councilman Chandler.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I'd like to do is apologize to the mayor in this council and to the citizens of Clarksville for not being here and not paying attention to my duties as I, as I should for the last three weeks. I did get real good news. They was able to remove my prostate. I had nine lymph nodes that were taken out, eight were negative, one was benign. Of course, they did remove it. They think that I'm going to have to go through, at the most, a couple rounds of chemo. With that being said, I want to reiterate to the public that the mayor and these 12 council people sitting here are not bound to protect or do anything extra for one individual group. Our job is to look out for the entire city, from the last person hired to the very top person hired. I'm just going to go ahead and say, everybody on this council has been accused of things that were not true. I'm going to give you a prime example. You know, everybody, well, you're in it for the money. The first time I was elected to the council, they told me, said, "Well, you need to go over to Finance and fill out your paperwork." And I went over there, and they were telling me, "Well, you, you get paid on these days." And I said, "Wait a minute." That's why I said, "How much is it?" There's not a person sitting up here that does it for the dollar amount. We all have it in our heart to try to protect this city, the city's employees, and do everything we can on an above-board and even plane. Thank you.
Well said. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to let the city know, the residents, and all of you all that are here today, that on August the 2nd, at 5:00 PM at Dixon Park, that's at 10th Street, we will be celebrating Emancipation Day. It will be a block party, and the theme is the spirit of liberty and unity in the community. The block party will feature the Nate Jackson Band, the Burt &amp; Fraternity Steppers, contemporary singers, prizes giveaway, vendors, and more. Everyone is invited to come, regardless of your background, your race, where you from, it doesn't matter. This is open to the public, and it is free. We have been celebrating in Tennessee the Emancipation Day for August the 8th, 154 years. So everyone is invited. Come, enjoy yourself. Relax, bring your family, have a staycation instead of a vacation. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
To the previous speaker, where can we get application if we have a business that wants to have a booth down there?
Talk to me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment or question? Seeing none, that completes our business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Without ejection, we adjourn.